All set whenever you're ready.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Bridgewater Town Council Meeting, April 26, 2021. I'd like to ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to pass on, we do have some condolences. condolences to the family of Ronald R. Rushton upon his passing on March 9, 2021. Mr. Rushton served in the United States Army during the Vietnam War. Also like to pass on condolences to the family of Eno Elbergini, excuse me, upon his passing on March 5, 2021. Mr. Elbergini served with the Combat Operations and Company, A 574th Signal Battalion, 77th Infantry Division, United States Army Forces Command, Far East during World War II. He was awarded a Bronze Star for his actions. He is one of the few remaining World War II veterans. I'd also like to pass on condolences to the family of Robert R. Smith upon his passing on March 18, 2021. Mr. Smith served aboard the USS Navarro during battle engagements in the Asiatic Pacific Theater of Operations, United States Navy, Far East during World War II, and the USS Latimer during the Korea War. He was one of the few surviving veterans who served in both World War II and the Korean War. I'd also like to pass on condolences to the family of Robert J. Kavici upon his passing on March 27, 2021. Mr. Kavici served with the combat engagements in D-Battery, 571st Anti-Aircraft Weapons Battalion, 16th Armored Division, 3rd United States Army during Reynolds-Adrenas, and Central European Campaigns in the United States Army during World War II. If we have a moment of silence for those veterans and any other veterans or first responders who have passed. Thank you. I'd just like to remind everyone that this meeting is being aired live and recorded. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, GLC 30A Paragraph 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2021, ordering imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Bridgewater Town Council will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. There will be no in-person attendance permitted. Citizens who wish to tune into the meeting may do so via Facebook Live. I want to say in a motion to approve the minutes from the March 23, 2021 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Fitzgibbons, any questions?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Chase?
No, nothing, thanks.
Any other councilors? Okay, this requires a roll call vote. I will abstain. I was not at the meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Thank you. Seven in favor, none against.
Okay, we do not have any announcements. We do not have any proclamations. We're at Citizens Open Forum. I would ask that any citizens that are, that would like to speak, please state your name and your street. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Are there any citizens who would like to speak?
Jill Sheridan?
Go ahead, Ms. Sheridan. Excuse me.
Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Last week I had audio issues, sorry. So I shared my emotional statement last week during a time when my family and I were in the early days of what showed to be enduring harassment and threats as reported and documented by Bridgewater PD. To, with regards to what happened at the Freedom Festival, the police departments of two towns are now involved with investigating these threats. And it started when I asserted that on March 20, the Freedom Festival, the organizers of which were not from Bridgewater or surrounding towns, was held free of charge at Legion Fields, the Rally for Freedom, featuring Super Happy Fun America, which the background of which I sent to all council members and town managers. It's a thinly veiled white nationalist movement that claimed to be an oppressed minority. One of the speakers was co-president of the group Mark Sahadi, who is currently disallowed from participating in political rallies because he's under FBI investigation for being filmed inside the Capitol as an insurrectionist on January 6. Another speaker, Dave Kopass, is a vocal supporter of the Oath Keepers and Proud Boys, both white nationalist groups, like heavily represented at the Capitol. And they routinely call Black Lives Matter activists, as well as myself, commies, Antifa, and perverts. I am a middle-aged mom and educator. I have four children. I am none of those things, but I have to ask how the festival was allowed to happen, again, when it was neither permitted or approved within 30 days' notice. I personally, as a member of Stand Up for Justice, wanted to hold an event at Legion Field in the same exact spot, using like just the bandstand in the grass area last summer, and was told I would need to pay a fee, get a permit, give 30 days' notice. I chose to go in a different direction with it, but the rally organizers contrived a story that there were people coming with weapons and bail money to threaten them. There's absolutely no evidence of violence from our counter protest. In fact, the only violence that did occur was at the end of the Freedom Rally event, once all the reporters and legal observers had left. And one of the Freedom Rally attendants attacked two of the counter protesters. So I'm on video requesting officer assistance because a woman was routinely harassing me and assaulting me all day. And on the video, you can see that I was clearly ignored by the officers, none of which was Bridgewater PD. Bridgewater Police Department has been supportive, but, you know, the offices that were hired from dozens of area towns, or how many area towns weren't. So, you know, I'm a mom of four, I'm a community volunteer, I'm a coach, I'm a public school teacher. And since this rally has been allowed to happen in town, I've literally had to flee my home two nights after midnight because of threats to my family. I've been dehumanized on national media sites. There was an unsuccessful campaign to have me fired from my teaching job.
You're up against your three minutes, so I just want to give you a little heads up.
Okay, thank you. One minute, please. The organizers of the rally run a public social media site that has openly encouraged these actions, and it is sick. So I'm just asking for my hometown to address the town-sponsored white supremacist rally that was labeled as both a festival and a political rally at the same time. To be sure, there were vendors, live music speakers, and the town has yet to explain who paid for this police detail for this private event that was a festival and a political rally at the same time. I've organized 20-plus political rallies in town and never had these persons.
I apologize, but thank you very much.
I apologize.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak for Citizens Open Forum? Mr. Lindy?
Thank you. Mark Lindy, 56, Michael Road in Bridgewater. I just wanted to ask the council, and I know it's your practice not to answer during the citizen comment, but I would like to know after the meeting last two weeks ago, whether we as citizens will get an answer to the questions that Ms. Sheridan just asked, and if we're going to hear from the police chief or the town manager about what happened. I thought I moved to a nice peaceful community, and the people that came here are not people from Bridgewater, and I hope to never see them again. So hopefully we'll get some answers. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak for Citizens Open Forum? And I don't see anyone, do you?
Hi, I did.
I don't see him. Oh, sorry, I don't see anyone, but I see that Mr. Jeff Daniels just unmuted himself.
Okay.
Sorry, joining late. Yeah, I know that all this has been hashed out before.
Mr. Daniels, can you just state your street, please?
Yeah, 20 Maple Avenue.
Thank you.
You know, this has all been hashed out in the last conversation, but given that there's voices that are dissenting in this matter, I just want to point out again that, you know, I and my young children were walking by that event and stopped and spoke to the folks there. There were minorities represented there. People were very kind. People were playing. The only negative interactions we had were from counter protesters that were yelling at and booing my children and I, who weren't even a part of that event as we were walking down the road. And so I just want to say that there's multiple perspectives on this, and I don't know about all the town rules and all that sort of stuff. I just know that what's been described is not something that I experienced or other folks, many other folks that I heard from that actually did participate in the event as an organized event. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens who would like to speak during Citizens Open Forum?
Hi, this is Susie Robinson, 20 Holly Lane. I'd like to comment.
Go right ahead.
I've just observed in these past couple meetings that it sounds like there's been very specific questions asked of the town council and town administration. I would echo Mr. Lindy's sentiment and question of how are you responding? When are you responding? And I think it's really incumbent upon this group to be responsive to the people that you're serving in this community. Like I said, there have been really specific questions asking about the permitting of the... I was not part of the festival. I did not attend. I'm just merely responding as an observer to these questions. And I just ask and encourage those of you who are serving your constituents to be responsive and answer the questions that have been asked by people who are asking to feel safe and welcome and heard. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just scanning. And I don't see anyone else, do you?
I don't see anybody else who has their hands raised, and I have not received any other chats.
Okay. Alrighty, moving on to appointments. We do not have any hearings. We do not have any licensed transactions. We do not have any... We'll move to presentations. We're going to have a general budget presentation by the town manager. Mr. Dot, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. As you know, April 1 is the date set by charter by which the town manager has to submit a balanced budget or a budget to the town council, a final budget to the town council. That budget was submitted to you and is ready for your review. So what I thought I would do, as we usually do after the budget submission, I thought I would walk through mostly for your benefit, although I think council has been more heavily involved in the creation and the development of the budget, as is usual. But I thought I would walk through the budget at a high level and help you and help the, excuse me, the public understand what goes into it and how the priorities are set, because that always seems to be a question that is had. So I will walk through this, and then I'll share my screen when I get to the numbers and just go through those. So we follow some very broad principles as laid out in the budget resolution that the council adopts on an annual basis in order to formulate the budget. We strive for sound financial condition, and we define that as cash solvency. Budgetary, meaning you have the cash to pay your bills when you need to pay your bills. Budget solvency, which is the ability to annually balance our budget. Long-term solvency, which is our ability to pay for future projected costs. Service level, service level solvency, which is the ability to provide for needed and required services, municipal services. Reserve solvency, which is the ability to adapt and respond, allows us the ability to adapt and respond to economic conditions. And we've added capital solvency, which is the ability to assess, maintain, and replace our capital assets when and if that is necessary. Finally, we have identified a sound financial condition as being reflected in our bond rating. And our goal is always to maintain, well, always to maintain and always to improve the current bond rating, which is Moody's A2. So those are the very broad principles that we look for when we're developing any annual general fund or enterprise fund budget. As for specifics for this year and what we looked at, we want to avoid budgetary practices that balance our current expenditures at the expense of meeting future year's expenses. So things, you know, postponing routine maintenance, which I know the councils is very familiar with, but postponing routine maintenance and upkeep of our facilities and equipment in order to fund current year budgets, we will not do. So that's one more specific 2020 principle. We want to make sure that our recurring operating costs will be funded by recurring sources of revenue. We don't want to use one-year, one-time sources of revenue to fund recurring costs. And as a corollary to that, we want to make sure that we have an unreserved fund balance, which is also referred to as free cash, at the end of our FY22 season at somewhere in the neighborhood of 1.5% of our FY21 operating budget. So that's important because I think, as the council well knows, free cash is used for many of our capital improvements, capital equipment, unexpected or extraordinary expenses, unbudgeted snow and ice removal expenses, and it also is there to meet our stabilization reserve policies and objectives. And to that end, the council resolution has said that we're going to maintain a stabilization fund at around 10% of our annual operating budget. So as the operating budget increases over the years, we want to make sure that we're continuing to add to the stabilization fund in order to maintain that 10%. A strong, I will point out, and I think, you know, came to fruition this year. We didn't anticipate that it would, but in the FY21 budget, which is the budget we're living under right now, we had to pull $1.6 million from stabilization in order to fund that building, in order to fund that budget last May. So that is why stabilization plays such an important role. It's a stabilizing force in municipal finance. It allows us to weather the ups and downs of the economy. We never anticipated that it would force us to weather a pandemic, but I can tell you that I'm quite pleased that it was there and did help us through the year. So, but I am, by the same token, I'm very happy to report that we are not proposing tapping stabilization for the FY22 budget. That's a little bit of a change in what I've been saying over the past number of months, because we fully anticipated, prior to honing our revenue estimates, we fully anticipated that we would have to tap the stabilization fund again for FY22. But I'm happy to report I am not proposing that. Just in terms of expenditures, we want to get our hands around our major cost drivers, and we want to make sure that we are funding maintenance of our capital assets. We want to make sure that, you know, our software is up to date, our infrastructure is maintained, that our land and buildings are maintained as well. So those are all addressed in this budget. I can tell you that they're not addressed to the level that I would want, and I'm sure the council won't want, but I think we've made great strides towards a long-term commitment to ensuring that those are the focuses. That will be our focus for the next number of years. And then finally, town managers' budget objectives, which are also built into the budget resolution. We want to continue with our efforts in encouraging all of our town departments to obtain grant funding from any source to offset capital expenditures. Note that we are not looking for grant funding to offset operational expenditures, because as the resolution outlined earlier, we want to make sure that we are meeting our expenses with our regularly recurring revenues, not just sort of one-time revenues. We do continue to review all the cost implications of contracted services versus town staffing in all our departments. In some departments, we've increased our staffing, and in other departments, we have decreased our staffing and relied on contracted services. So we do that analysis virtually every time we have a job opening, and we're quite thorough and extensive about those discussions. We continue to try to enhance the town's website, make it usable during the 2021 pandemic. Obviously, more and more and more people have used the town website and the technology associated with it in order to get information, in order to pay bills, in short, to do anything that the public would otherwise do in person in town hall. We've turned, a lot of people have turned to the website for that. So we know we have a lot of work to do on the website. We are certainly not ignorant of that, but we continue to make improvements there. So finally, town managers' objective, maintain current service levels and a budget which will meet the service priorities is set forth by me and also by the council budget resolution. So with that little bit of introduction, I will simply, instead of reviewing my entire budget message, which would put the listener to sleep, let me share my screen if I can. And I will go through the numbers for you. All right, hopefully you can see the sources and uses document. And I should point out, before I go through this, our Finance Director, Tony Solomati, and our Assistant Town Manager, Kim Williams, are both on the call. Both have done yeoman's work with all the departments to create not only this budget, but also our capital budget, which you will be seeing next. And quite extensive and intertwined and related, which is the way it should be. Those two, Capital Spending, Capital Improvement Plan, and also the yearly spending plan. So kudos to both of them, and certainly the Finance Department staff for doing an exceptional job on the budget. So I will start. I'll go through this, and I think if you have any questions, let me know. I'm happy to take those, and Tony can also chime in where appropriate. But our prior, sorry, our... Prior, the revenues are calculated by the Finance Director and Town Manager. Our levy limit is used, which was $46,306. And added to that is our standard 2.5% growth that's allowed by Prop 2.5. We do have new growth this year, and I'll highlight that. We have new growth of 1 point, over $1.5 million. And that's certainly the highest new growth figure we've had in my tenure. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that's the highest new growth figure we've ever had. But new growth, again, at $1.5 million. What that figure is, for those that don't know, that is the amount we project to be raising in additional real estate tax due to new construction, new renovations, and so forth. So hence the term new growth.
So, Mr. President, are we just going to be able to ask questions on the fly, or do we have to wait till the end?
I would kind of like to wait till the end, Mr. Fitzgibbons, just so we can get through it.
We're going to have to scroll back through for my questions, but that's fine.
I can do that.
Thank you.
In any case, we are left with an FY22 total levy of just a little bit over $49 million. We have a little bit of excludable town debt. That's not substantially different than it has been in years past. But I will point out that the large number of Bridgewater-Ranham Regional District excluded debt has grown substantially. Now, obviously, that is due to the first payments of the Mitchell School bond. And I can get into that a little bit later, but that's the sizable increase there. So we have total debt exclusion amount of about $4.5 million there. So some of our new growth up here at $1.5 million is offset by the DIF. If you recall, the council voted that DIF a couple of years ago. And what that said was that, okay, anything within the Elm Street District, any new growth within the Elm Street District, we are going to set aside and pay off the bond using that new growth amount. So that, as you can see, for this year is $431,000. So that will pay off, and that will continue to be the funding source for the Elm Street bond until that bond is paid off. So when we said there would be no adverse impact to the taxpayer, that's the mechanics, and that's the math on how that works. So quickly scroll down. The big, one of the biggest funding sources, we have state aid. Last year, we estimated state aid at about $500,000 less than the $4 million that is currently in the governor's proposed budget. We had, if you recall, last year, we had, at this time, we had no idea what was going to happen with the state budget. Everything was up in the air, and there was a huge amount of confusion around what kind of funding the state would continue to give us. So this year, we have the governor's proposed budget maintains funding. So last year, we had cut it by 10% and ended up getting an amount equal to FY20. And this year, we've plugged in the governor's proposed number, which historically has been either the amount that we end up getting or a little bit under the amount that we end up getting. So we're comfortable, quite comfortable with that $4 million figure. The other piece that I'll point out to you, Counselor Gallagher, a month or two ago, had asked about state-owned land, and there was an article, I believe, in Commonwealth Magazine, which indicated that Bridgewater specifically, Bridgewater may fall short on the state-owned land revenue because a portion of that land was getting transferred to the Fire Services Department. And under state law, Fire Services is not an eligible state entity upon which the state will make a pilot payment or will make a payment based on the amount of state-owned land. So our research thus far indicates that the land is actually not being transferred. The ownership of the land is not being transferred, that it's actually a lease agreement, however the state does that, and we will not be losing our state-owned land revenue for that particular acreage. So this represents a number that's roughly, I believe, $20,000 higher than it was in FY21. Another area where we saw, where we saw a substantial increase, where we saw a substantial increase in our... in our revenue is in motor vehicle excise. We dropped our projections last year on motor vehicle excise because again, we didn't know what the future was going to hold for us and we suspected that, given the enormous unemployment rate at the time, that people would be opting not to purchase new vehicles and and holding on to old vehicles or just parting with vehicles and instead of having two car families, you know, dropping down to having a one car family. So we projected it much lower than the three point one million dollars that that we are now projecting. And again, that's based on, and Tony can explain that a little bit, a little bit later, but that's based on, you know, pretty solid projections and and tracking, you know, five year averages as well. So the only area where we really have not increased our revenue projections robustly really is room excise, meals taxes based. Again, we increased that substantially, but that's based on on the quarterly quarterly payments that we're getting in FY twenty one. So meals restaurants have been going through a torturous time, we recognize, but meals tax, which is a state state imposed tax, local option, but state imposed tax does not seem to have taken a huge hit. The other side of the coin, room occupancy, we really effectively have one hotel in town. And and so we're, we know that the people are not traveling and leasing hotel rooms at the rate that they were before the pandemic. So we've purposely kept that number slightly on the lower side. I won't go through all these numbers. I will just highlight a few. We've had questions about the cannabis impact fee. That is based upon actual payments in FY twenty one. And so that is up by by over last year and but strictly based upon current payments and the mitigation agreements that we have negotiated with the two cannabis two cannabis, medical marijuana and and grower slash growers that we have in Bridgewater. I won't highlight really anything else there. Unless, you know, I can come back to it when we have questions, but I won't really highlight anything there. We do, as as you know, we we transfer indirect funds from the the enterprise accounts. So these are all transfers. Obviously, we transfer five hundred and eighty. That's the same amount that we have for the last couple of years. And and those are indirects that are charged off to pay for for the indirect expenses that that we incur on the enterprise. So it's really designed to pay for the mostly the the back office, the accounting work, the finance office work that that gets done on behalf of all of those enterprise funds. So we want to make sure that we're we're charging off all the expenses fairly right around, right around all town operations. I will highlight the ambulance. And again, Tony can go into more detail on this, but we've dropped our our transfer amount a little bit from where we had anticipated. You know, we had anticipated over two million dollar mark. We've dropped that somewhat and that's reflective of the decrease, the actual decrease in the use of the ambulance. Lately, we've seen a nice bounce back and we've had a lot of discussion with our billing service about, you know, future projections and so forth, but we dropped that a little bit just to reflect the the reduced usage of the ambulance. And and it seems a little counterintuitive. When you're going through a pandemic, you would think that the ambulance service would pick up substantially and we'd be seeing a significant revenue increase. And quite the opposite is true during the pandemic. People hesitated to go to hospitals because they felt that that was you know, not a wise decision in terms of of exposure to COVID. So people suffered either at home or went to their primary care, went to urgent care and did not did not use our ambulance service as much. We think, you know, Tony's projected a multi year bounce back there. So based on our our most recent data, I think that looks to be good and we'll see a bounce back. But but again, we're slightly underestimating what we had originally anticipated proposing for a transfer. So that's, that is really the, on the revenue side. And and I don't know, Mr. President, if you want to maybe split up the questions, maybe on the revenue side and the expense side, if you want. Up to you, obviously.
Yeah, if anyone has any question for the town manager, please speak up with the screen with Michael sharing the screen. I can't see people. So I'll say, Mr. Fitzgibbons, do you
Yes, yeah. So if we could go back to the top, Michael. And and I just, I just wanted, I just want the folks at home to understand this two and a half percent increase line that you're showing. That's a choice that we make as a town that we're going to increase what we're taking out of taxation from the town by one point one five seven million because that's what the law allows. Should we have decided we want to take less out? We could do that. And that would go then forever unused. So what we're trying to do is use the two and a half wisely to say, put some in the bank and spend some today, correct?
That's a very good way to put it.
Yeah. And so and so then looking at, looking at new growth at one point five million, if we subtract the four hundred thousand for the diff, that still leaves us at one point one million. So that's two and a half percent as well. I mean, it's essentially the same number as the two and a half percent increase. What's driving that? And then given, given what's driving it, are there other expenses that we see coming down the line from what's driving it that may be hitting us in one, two, three, four, five years from now that we need to worry about?
That's a great question. I'm not actually Touche. That would lead me into the expense side and I, but I'm happy to answer that because that does, you know, it that's there's a good side and a bad side to our new growth. The good part is it's it's a healthy substantial number. The bad side is that about nine hundred thousand of that is residential new growth and we've, as everybody knows, we've seen an enormous amount of new building. We've seen and we will continue to see more new buildings as some of these developments come on, but but with that inevitably comes additional municipal services. So so our challenge is to make sure that that we are very methodically growing municipal service services and meeting the the demand needs of the community, but not going overboard because we know that at some point, our new growth will will begin to level off and begin to shrink, but our expenses will will continue to 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 grow. So so there's, as I say, a good side and a bad side to that new growth. Municipal services may not be needed now, but four or five years from now, we may be in a position where we've got to hire additional police, additional fire, certainly additional highway folks to take care of roads, you know, new roads that the town ends up accepting. And just, you know, general work on our existing town roads that are getting more and more traffic. So so there's a good side to the bad side of that.
Right. Then moving down to the BR regional debt exclusion, in fact, the whole debt exclusion. The town votes on that in the ballot box to say, yes, we're willing to spend above and beyond our two and a half increase and that's not subject to the levy limit or anything like that. We're willing to pay more for these things, correct?
That is exactly true. So these, all of these expenses have been voted by the the voter.
And so the four point two million this year, how does that compare to previous years? And how is that going to play out over the course of the next a couple of years? Are there projects coming off the books that will drop that four point two million?
It compare, I can, I'll I'll defer to Tony on the second part of your question, but on the the first part of your question, last year's regional excluded regional debt for Bridgewater was a little over one point seven million. So this is a substantial increase over and above that.
Yeah, I think it would be, I think it would be helpful for historical purposes to put together an overall historical trend line on that so that I, I think we've heard many times from our auditors that it's it's appropriate to have a certain amount of debt exclusion on the books at all the ti- at all times, not to go too far above or below and ten percent, which is right about where we are right now, is about right. And so where that where that floats may depend year to year, but as part of sound fiscal management, we'd want to keep that number up there all the time so that we're able to manage other capital expenses. Is that a fair statement?
That's a very fair statement. I will point out that obviously, schools are very expensive and we all know that. And and we were very fortunate to get get a bid and get a a general contractor that that gave us a bid that was
Don't worry, I'll ask you about the Mitchell School when it comes to the update. I don't want to take more time. And then just my last observation is you'd said that state aid was one of the, was might be the second biggest source, but it looked to me like local receipts were five million, which seems to be bigger than the four and a half million. So it's really, actually, to me, it's kind of fortunate. We don't rely so much on state aid to balance our budget so that if we do take take a hit, we're able to make up some of that difference with the stabilization, as you talked about beforehand, to to plug that in as revenue, but still have other sources that we're looking at, obviously mainly property taxes, right? Correct. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. That's all I had on the on the revenue side.
Mr. President, if I could.
Yes, Mr. Gallagher.
Thank you. Mike, just scroll back up a little bit. So new growth of one million four. I I guess I just wanted to ask you, what developed over the last couple of months where you and your finance team felt comfortable in increasing that amount? Because the initial revenue projection had eight hundred thousand and our deficit was eight hundred thousand. So the difference is about seven hundred and fifty thousand. And so you what indicators did you get? Were you comfortable with that one million four, one million five forty four for fiscal twenty two?
That one, I'd, I'm happy to have Tony address that one. That's a great question. And and the eight hundred figure, I think, came from last year's new growth and we had carried that over, but I'll defer to Tony on that one.
So a year, a year and a half ago, we embarked on a a new protocol to arrive at our new growth estimate no later than four fifteen of the budget, four fifteen of the upcoming budget season. The work that Shelley and PK, who is our outside assessing firm that they've done since November has allowed us to come up with what we, what she feels and I feel is is factual data based on the work that we have done much earlier than we've ever done in the past. So that's, that's real hard numbers for commercial, made up of commercial, industrial, personal property and residential values that have already been processed, whether they've been processed through identifying the growth through building permits that were pulled. Parcels that are subdivided and add value in new growth because they are now billable lots. And having the information that is is as update, as updated as possible as it relates to finished homes that were partially finished last year and now are completely finished and they're build out this year.
And obviously, that number obviously would just become part of the levy limit if we meet that for fiscal twenty three, but you don't, but this is an anomaly. Would you say it's an anomaly?
Oh, it is. Yes. Okay. All right. We are seven hundred, almost seven hundred thousand dollars above our high watermark. Let's say six hundred thousand at least above our high mark watermark for new growth.
And then the other concern or the other question I had is down under local receipts on the line seventeen, if it's the same one, no, it would be line seventeen point one. Seventeen point one, you initially, there was a five hundred thousand dollar projection there and it was reduced to four hundred thousand. As of February, as of February's report that we got, we had five hundred and fifty six thousand. So what do you see? What did you see that you were comfortable enough saying, wait a minute, we better reduce that a little bit?
So we're, we're looking for a one point five percent surplus at the end of the budget season of FY twenty two for the budget resolution. So when I go through these numbers, I'm also estimating for myself, what do I believe the surplus will be budget to actual in those particular line items. So I'm comfortable with the numbers that we have there. And I I I think they're both the motor vehicle and the permits are areas where we contribute to our surplus at the end of the fiscal year.
That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Any other councillors?
Yeah, Bill.
Mr. Wood?
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. So, Mr. Dutton, I would have asked this in a committee, probably budget committee if I'd been on the committee, but I I know in the past that the owners of the Pilgrim Power Plant have contributed to a portion of the fire chief's salary and turnout codes, maybe something else. Are are those payments still, those payments do not show up on the schedule and they're not that they're not really portioned into the budget either, but are those still being made and what risk are, is that amount? And do you have a total sum of what that benefit is?
I'll defer to Tony on that, but I believe this year, the we have phased out that that revenue stream.
But I'll That's exactly right and nothing's at risk. We're paying a hundred percent and we budgeted a hundred percent of the salaries that would have been charged off to that a particular fund out of the general fund revenue.
Okay, that's good news. I'm going back to line ten there on the on the cannabis impact fees. So those are, those are not, those are recurring, but not forever. Do we have an expiration date on those?
So those, I believe those are five year contracts or five year agreements, mitigation agreements. And I can tell you, that's, that's a timely question because each time every year, the state requests very specific listing of what what our mitigate with with a lot of specificity, what our actual expenses are that are being mitigated. And while we have, I think, negotiated favorable fees in those mitigation agreements, obviously very favorable fees in those mitigation agreements, we can certainly sense that the state is is looking to see whether or not you know, it's really reasonable to be charging mitigation to industries that that may or may not have quantifiable impacts to the community. So we see that, we we, you know, know, kind of know it's coming. We know that there's going to be a proposal to eliminate, not certainly not locally, but on on the state level to eliminate impact fees for for cannabis companies. And and so that is, that is an area where I think, I think Mr. Salanti and I you know, look very carefully to make sure that that we're not going to be solely relying. Our whole budget should never rely on on that line item because we are not confident that that's going to be continuing.
Okay, so so while it's, while it's safe this year, it's not necessarily safe in future budgets.
That would be my assessment, correct?
Um, yeah, Tony, I'm, I'm, I'm impressed by the new growth numbers back you know, five, five years or more, when we're trying to be a bit more conservative, we would have said, you know, stick to the eight hundred thousand and hope that we get free cash on the other end to use for capital projects. So so we're, we're banking on this new growth and then a one point five haircut off the budget to head toward capital projects.
That's correct. That's correct.
So year, so it is a collection of the budget, of the revenue sources. So year, so i- as a collection of the budget, of the revenue sources in a year-over-year picture, how much are we, have we increased this year from last year?
Our overall revenue?
Overall revenue, yeah.
Um, was up around three. One second, I have that number someplace, yeah. Three point seven three percent excluding the debt exclusions and the transfers. I pulled those out. Um, and I just look at the, the dollars that are going to the operation, operational budget, so about three point seven three percent.
Alright, as I, as I remember the curves from the workshop a couple of years ago, looking at, um, like the motor vehicle excise tax, maybe starting to dip off slightly and some of the others. So, so we're safe this year, but is your projection for next year, a year after, uh, stable or, or is that possibly going to decline next year?
Um, I, I'm like you right now, um, I'm still trying to wait and see on a couple of things. I mean, we, we are seeing a slowdown in our commitment, our first commitment for the motor vehicle excise, a large commitment is in February. We were down, I think, around three percent. Our receipts are actually up compared to last year because we did have slow pay last year. Um, so, uh, a lot of these other, uh, revenue streams excluding the cannabis that you alluded to are pretty predictable. Um, but yeah, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna have a little, uh, stagnation in, in, in growth on the local receipt side, uh, you know, couple, couple, three years from now.
Okay, so thank you.
Any other questions on the revenue side? Okay, seeing none, uh, Mr. Dutton, I can go to the expenses.
Alright, thank you. Um, so let me, uh, just quickly run through the expenses, um, and, and give you sort of a, as I say, a thirty thousand foot and then feel free to, to ask any questions. So, uh, I'll, I'll start out with the, with the, um, statement that I think, uh, most of our budgets, uh, remain pretty, pretty much the same. You, we're not seeing any radical departures, uh, radical changes in service delivery, uh, and so forth. Uh, but I will highlight a few changes and, and I'm sure Tony will fill in a couple of changes that, that, uh, that I neglect. Uh, our general fund, uh, budget, uh, and let me back up, you know, I think roughly ninety percent of our budgets are people. Um, so, so all of the, uh, most of the numbers you see are, are to employ people. Um, and, uh, and when I say we haven't had any radical shifts, we haven't had any radical, uh, increase in, in number of hires. We haven't had any, uh, radical, uh, layoffs, which, uh, which really is, uh, quite impressive, uh, since virtually every town, uh, in the state, I shouldn't say every town, but many, many towns in the state over the last fiscal year have, have had to lay off or furlough folks. Uh, and we haven't, knock on wood. So that, that continues, uh, we continue that planning, uh, in that kind of conservative, uh, approach to, to budgeting in, uh, in twenty-two. General fund department's pretty much the same. We have funded, uh, uh, finance, uh, sorry, not finance. Um, a facilities director, um, that, uh, portion of which will be paid out of general fund. So there's a little, uh, increase, uh, in general fund expense there. Uh, public safety, um, we are seeing a little bit of an increase there. Um, and, and there are two sort of changes, uh, that we're looking at. One change in the fire department gives it a bit of a restructure and also, um, brings on or designates a position to be, uh, for, for inspectional, uh, purposes, not uncommon with fire departments, uh, in other fire departments, but it, it, uh, dedicates, uh, one of the fire department, uh, one of the firefighters to, uh, inspectional, um, an inspectional, um, uh, service and, uh, that, uh, not in and of itself, but that does come with a revenue, uh, increase so that, that we've tried to mitigate um, the impact of an additional employee there. Um, so that's the fire department. The police department is also seeing a little bit of increase, uh, it, it, uh, the increase there expands the staff by one and, uh, and also, uh, uh, more robustly funds the cadet program, which has been quite successful for us over the last couple of years. Um, and, uh, in that one, that in- increase in one helps to, uh, helps us and I think helps the chief uh, to plan for future retirements that we know about and as well as future retirements that we, we, uh, may not know about at this point. So there's, the, the, one of the issues with the police department is that, that we have, um, a group of employees that are creeping closer to retirement, a big group of them and then a big group of younger, uh, women and men. Um, and in the middle, there's not a whole lot. Um, so, so that's just a function of, of, I think, uh, the past, uh, practices, you know, tough times, uh, layoffs and, uh, and so forth. So, so all those employees, as they work through this, through the, the, uh, number of years, uh, begin to age out and retire. Uh, and we know about some of those and, and we suspect that others will opt for an earlier retirement because they've got thirty years in. So, so the added, um, position helps bridge a lot of those, uh, changes. And, uh, and so that's, uh, that's what's built in there. Um, nothing, uh, substantially different, uh, in the, uh, roadways, uh, department with the exception of, uh, partially, uh, funding a new position of DPW director. Um, and again, that, that position gets shared by, uh, not only the general fund, but by the enterprise funds, uh, that would fall under a DPW. So, so that is, uh, finally, uh, we're in a position to be able to pull the trigger and really create, um, the DPW that I think, uh, residents, voters, and certainly the council had, uh, has been looking for, for the past, uh, you know, past number of years. Nothing substantially different, uh, with really any, um, any of the, uh, line items that you see, uh, below that. Uh, there's, uh, another spot where the, the, uh, diff payment comes into play, but, uh, but more importantly, on the benefit side, as I say, roughly ninety percent of, of our budget is people. And, uh, and we, uh, have to, uh, account for, for, uh, benefits. Mostly, uh, health insurance is our biggest driver, but, uh, we've got, uh, retirement assessments, uh, which, which is also a sizable amount. Um, fortunately, that, that line has not increased dramatically and, and I'll defer to Tony on, on the, sort of the percentage increase on the, on the health insurance side and the benefit side. I don't know if you have those right, Andy.
I, let me, let me pull it up, Michael.
Alright, through, I threw a curve ball.
Yeah, that's okay, continue. I'll let you know in a second.
Alright, um, our liability insurance has gone up, uh, a little bit, uh, to be expected. Um, and that sort of rounds out, um, the, the, uh, town operating budgets.
The benefits went up overall three point five seven percent.
Okay, so, so that's a, a three point five seven percent increase, uh, over our projection last year. Um, on the health, and, uh, one of the items came up last night at, uh, budget and finance, um, was, um, uh, you know, why, why the health insurance component had not gone up, um, uh, more sizably and part of that was because, uh, we, last year in our FY twenty-one, but when I say last year, it's our current budget, um, we had funded health insurance anticipating that, that a number of people uh, would be, a number of spouses of employees would be losing jobs and transitioning onto, uh, town health insurance. Um, I don't know that we had any instance of that, but, uh, but back then, uh, that's what we were budgeting for. So, so hence, um, it, the increase doesn't appear as dramatic, um, as, as it might otherwise be. Um, so the regional, um, very happy to report, you know, we, we've spent a lot of time discussing, um, the school's budget, um, having a good line of communication with, uh, superintendent, the business, uh, manager over at the district as well as, uh, our partners in Rainham. And, um, and that, uh, figure in the budget, thirty million, five ninety-six, three fifteen is, uh, is the assessment, uh, that the school, uh, settled on at their, uh, most recent meeting. So there's no need to go back, no need for the district to go back and have to readjust and budget, uh, differently. Um, because that's what we have, I, I hope, because that's what we have plugged in, um, to our budget. Again, uh, you saw it up above on the revenue side, but there is the payment out, um, for the debt excluded, uh, district debt. Now, that's not only, uh, keep in mind, that's not only the, uh, Mitchell School, about a million six of that or so, I believe is the high school, uh, as we continue to pay down the debt on the two borrowings for the high school. On the, um, on the tech schools, um, we have, we do see about a two hundred and change, uh, increase in the Bristol Plymouth tuition. That's simply a function of additional students. Um, and, uh, as is, uh, Bristol Aggie, uh, is up, a couple of students as well. So that, again, just a function of the, the numbers of students going to those respective schools. We don't anticipate, um, and anybody going to Norfolk, uh, Aggie at this point. Uh, so that is, uh, funded at zero. And, uh, and if that changes, obviously we'll have to make some budget adjustments, but right now we don't anticipate any. Um, these are always difficult for the, for the tech schools to calculate because they won't know their, um, their census until October, October first. And so, uh, they go by, uh, you know, applications, they go by, uh, people that have expressed interest and so forth. So, uh, so that is, uh, that is what they pass along to us as a, as an estimate. It's not an assessment per se, it's an estimate of, of where they think they will be. Um, and then really very little change on, on, uh, the balance of the budget. Um, state assessments and, uh, you know, MBTA assessment and the county assessments, uh, just a little bit above, uh, last year, but, uh, but just, uh, just a little bit. So, uh, snow and ice, we ended the year at a three hundred and ninety thousand dollar deficit. Um, and as I all explained every time, uh, this time of year, um, the snow and ice, uh, is a, is the only account that we are actually allowed to deficit spend. Um, because obviously nobody knows what is going to happen, uh, any particular winter weather wise, except for farmers all minute. So, um, so our number this year was three hundred and ninety thousand. Last year, the number was two twenty-five. Um, and that's, that's what we'll have to make up, uh, on the recap. So that is, um, that is generally the thirty thousand foot view of, uh, our um, general operating budget. I don't know if Tony has anything to add before questions?
I do not.
Happy to answer questions.
Any question?
Mr. President?
I, I heard, Mr., go ahead, Mr. Gallagher. I, I can't see anyone, so if you need.
I can't see anyone either. I'm just talking. So anyway, I have a couple of questions on the, on the revenue. And, and Michael, maybe you did bring this up either on the, um, revenue side or expense side, and I didn't hear it, but could you just elaborate a little more? You told us last night that the debt exclusion for the Mitchell School is for, just trying to confirm that it's for a twenty-year note and basically we're able to do that because of the borrowing, uh, interest rate and so forth. Is that correct?
I'll, that is correct. I'll defer to, to Tony to just sort of give you some of the more precise, uh, figures there.
Uh, that's exactly, uh, right. Um, and last year's debt exclusion was one million, seven, five, zero. So about two million five of this year, roughly two million four is for the, uh, the new school.
Very good, um, for twenty years.
It is for twenty years, um, and it begins to decline, uh, immediately.
This is the highest year we'll see that, um.
That is. That is correct.
It may still be around when it's paid off. Um, the other question I have is the three-page expense budget that you sent us in our package. I'm gonna guess, um, the difference is basically the snow and ice. The snow and ice is not in the three-page.
That's correct.
Presentation, so that's three ninety. It adds up to the sixty-five, five ninety-six. That's fine. So, the other thing, um, um, Mr. Dutton, the budget and finance, I'm sure this is gonna get referred out tonight. The budget and finance, we're gonna be in on April twenty-second to probably go over the budget. Um, we didn't get the revenue, um, sheets, like the expense sheet. So we could just make sure we get the revenue pieces for our, our committing, so. Other than that, I appreciate, I appreciate as one counselor, all the work you guys have put into this budget. We, you know, I know it was probably a little, um, difficult at first, but um, hopefully these revenue projections will come in and the state revenue will meet its obligation and not cut any of it during the, during the fiscal year. That's all.
Yes, thank you, Mr. George. Um, going back to the top there, if we could, Mr. Dutton. Um, yeah, yeah, right, the gen- general uses of funds. So, just because of the way the state wants you to account for, um, money, we have to separate out nine eleven to nine nineteen in a different line than throughout one hundred, two hundred, four hundred, five hundred, et cetera, right?
Correct.
I mean, right, ide- ideally, you'd, you'd have those in each of the line items. But when you go in and you're negotiating with a union, let's say it's the firefighters or the police or the library workers, et cetera. You're always including in your, in your calculation of what we can afford in a contract. You're always including what the projected cost of benefits across the length of the contract will be, right?
Correct, correct. We do, we do quite an extensive amount of work to show, uh, show that the unions, um, uh, exactly where we think our, our financial condition and position is and where it will be in two, three, four, or five years, correct?
Yeah, and, 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 but it's just some folks watching at home would, you look at it and say, well, you know, they're gonna increase, you know, the union contracts by X and then they're still gonna get increases in benefits. So in, in the negotiation, it's all in. It's, it's not, it's, it's only an accounting, I, I won't say gimmick, but I'll say gimmick that tells you you have to split them up away from each of the lines. And maybe Tony can explain better than I can.
It's, it's just we're following the UMS code and, um, it in fact, uh, calls for us to put it into its own line unless we did a cost basis budget. And we, we, we don't do that at this point, but we do do that. We go through that discussion during negotiations in great detail with the bargaining units.
And then if we can just scroll down a little bit through the rest of it, uh, um, one thing I just want to make sure of on the library side, that we're in no danger of losing hours, cutting staff, that we're still gonna be fully accredited regionally, et cetera. Is that fair?
That's absolutely correct.
Okay, alright. And then on the, on the, uh, school side, you know, obviously it's, it's great news that, you know, the, the regional school district came in with an assessment that we, that you, you guys can confidently say we can, we can support. And, and that's great. Um, but on the, on the other, the tech, technical school side where you said, you know, those are estimates and obviously today we don't have anyone in Norfolk County, but somebody might go there and we'd have to come up with the money. That would be funded from available funds, right?
Correct.
Essentially, you know, do free cash or some other vehicle. It, it, it's not gonna have, it's not gonna cause us to break the budget, so to speak.
No, I, I, and, and, you know, as I say, these estimates are based upon either applications or expressions of interest. So, so almost, you know, built into that is sort of a very conservative figure because obviously all applicants to the tech schools, you know, may get accepted, but they may not go. So, so we budget based upon all the applicants, uh, to the tech schools.
Okay, great.
But if there were a need for a transfer, it would probably come from within the budget to the extent possible. I don't think we would, uh, turn to free cash to try to fund, fund that expense.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Dutton? Okay, seeing none. Uh, Mr. Dutton, can you stop sharing your screen? That'd be great. Thank you very much. Okay. All right, moving on to the town manager's report. First item is the Mitchell School update.
All right. Well, thank you. If you're not tired of hearing from me, let me give you a, a little bit of an update and, and thank Tony too. Answering some questions. Let me, let me give you a little bit of update on the Mitchell School. Foundation work does continue. And, and just as last week, footings being poured, rebar being installed, forms being put up. Also on, they've split up sort of discussions in, in the construction meetings, sort of identified A and B as sort of the two different buildings, even though it's really one building. But they are working in, on, on water lines that go beneath the slab, water lines, infiltration systems. Also being begun, and some of the site work being begun as well. So, so work continues. They are right on target. No substantial delays at all. No, no delays at all. So, so we're quite pleased about that. As I mentioned last time, we're down to a project budget. Our estimate was eight hundred, sorry, eighty million, eighty million, six hundred thousand. It's down to sixty seven thousand, six hundred forty seven. And, and so that will affect, positively affect our reimbursement rate from the state. And we are projecting the town contribution to be thirty five million, three twelve, which is, is what those bond repayment figures are based upon. And, and then a state reimbursement amount of thirty two million, little over thirty two million. And I remind people, those are tentative numbers, and we continue to wait for MSBA to confirm. They should be, the timeline that I was told is correct. They should be confirming those numbers within the next couple of weeks. So can't wait to get them confirmed and then get, get, you know, some of those tax calculators up on the website. And we're still on track, as I mentioned, for a July eighth, twenty twenty two finish. And the next meeting of the school building committee is coming up on Monday, April twelfth at six thirty PM. And as I always say, more information can be found at BridgewaterSchoolProject.com. So happy to answer any questions about that.
Any questions for Mr. Dutton?
I think Mr. Dutton would be sad if I didn't ask him one.
I don't think so, Mr. Fitzgibbons, but go ahead.
So we're, we're, we're coming in substantially less than we projected out for the first time for numerous reasons, right? And when we get the confirmation from, from the state, that may lead to a higher reimbursement percentage than we thought or not. I'm, I'm just, I, I didn't hear you say that.
That is correct. It will lead to a higher real, actual reimbursement rate than we initially expected, our actual reimbursement rate. If the numbers that we're projecting hold true, would be more like forty seven point eight percent in, rather than the forty one percent that we were originally projected.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, moving on to COVID nineteen update.
COVID nineteen, we, last meeting, I reported that our numbers had all come down, our infection rates are down. We have seen a very slight bump in infection rates, but nothing like some of our neighboring towns and certainly the city of Brockton. So we are, we are hovering right now at about three point one percent infection rate, and we've got about thirty community cases. BSU has seven student cases in quarantine. But that, that is not, certainly not the explosion that we've seen in, in some of our neighboring towns. So, you know, we continue to be diligent. I certainly, within Town Hall, we are quite diligent about making sure that folks are, are wearing masks and they're distant. We, we have been fully open for a while now and seems to be going well. We follow the protocols. I will, I will mention, and I will ask the public for some patience as we do have a number of our sort of public facing employees, either dealing with COVID related absences or, or dealing with COVID themselves. So I do, do ask that the people be patient because not all of the offices, well, there may be a few offices that are not open when, when you come in. So please, please be patient. Any, most, anybody is willing to, you know, help you out if they can. If, if it's a highly technical or highly specialized issue, then, then you may have to wait until we can get somebody there who can help. But otherwise, pretty much everybody's willing to pitch in and try to get whatever service of a member of the public needs addressed. I will just lastly point out, I've been sort of alluding to it the last few weeks, but we have been working very closely with BSU and about eight of our surrounding communities to support a regional vaccination, vaccinations, vaccination site on, on BSU's campus. And BSU has put together a plan with the help of, of a lot of, as I say, those eight surrounding communities. And we are awaiting approval by DPH on the site and the plan. That was promised a couple of weeks ago. Surprisingly, it was promised again, but more recently, and we still have not, not heard. But if approved, BSU can get their site up and running in just a day or two. That's how, that's how well planned out it's been. So kudos to, to the BSU folks that have, that have worked on that. And obviously, any regional site is open to anyone from the state. Now there are many regional sites opening up, so we don't anticipate a deluge of people, you know, coming to Bridgewater. We anticipate Bridgewater residents and then, and then folks from the surrounding towns. And that, that's about it. Seven hundred and fifty doses a day is what the state asks the capacity to be. And so BSU can, can easily, easily handle that, really, without very much impact whatsoever to the traffic or surrounding, surrounding neighborhoods. And then obviously, that, that would be dependent upon the supply of, of vaccine from the state. So, but we are just playing a waiting game with DPH on that one. But happy to answer questions about COVID.
Any questions for Mr. Dutton? Mr. Gallagher?
Questions? Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Michael, I saw last week a posting. Plymouth County came over and handed you some checks. I think everybody in the picture had a check in their hand. How, how, how are we doing with that? How much reimbursement did we receive then? And do you have anything outstanding that we're waiting now from Plymouth County? Are we pretty much up to date?
No, we do, we do have outstanding amounts. I believe our, our very rough figures, I believe our reimbursement, those five checks totaled something in that area of three hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But if Tony's still on, he can correct me. We do have, we do have a number of, of, of submissions still under review. It takes Plymouth County quite a bit of time to, to review the, the requests and then, and then approve them and then send the, the reimbursement to us. But I will say it's understandable because, you know, the federal government has been very clear that, that there, there will be a lot of audits of these funds. And so Plymouth County is very meticulous about asking very specific questions where, where we may have not been able to provide them with the information they needed in the first go around. But generally, we're, we're, we're pleased that the money is getting funneled back. And, but we, we do have a number of submissions that haven't been funded just yet.
Right. And then the most recent round of stimulus, the known as the American Recovery Act, the one point nine trillion, where we were earmarked or projected to get about two point six, seven million of that. I believe, is that also gonna be handled through Plymouth County and you would have to submit requests the same way? Is, has, have those guidelines been brought to your attention yet or?
I have not seen any guidelines. I know, last time I had asked, I know that, that Plymouth County and, and as well as actually state officials and even members of Congress were still waiting on guidance on how those funds would be distributed. So as soon as I get them, I'll certainly pass them along to the council.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Dutton? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to update on Town Common, Worldwood Two Memorial and Common Rail repairs.
So I think, I think folks have seen, although it's not noticeable, quite frankly, but I think folks have seen the repair on the south end of the common. Thank goodness. The, the very large concrete blocks are gone and, and that, the granite posts are back in and the rails are back in. And I'm sure that there is an active underground bedding going on about how long it's gonna be before a tractor trailer hits it again. But, but so be it. It's been repaired. One of the delays, quite frankly, was the granite, trying to source the granite, the right granite. It's a very difficult time to try to get anybody to do anything in terms of contracting because people are so flat out. But, but one of the delays for us was, was actually sourcing the granite posts. The repair at the south end actually used up our supply plus whatever they were able to source because we did have a supply of, of some of those posts, but they used that up. The repair at the north end is awaiting additional granite posts. So, so that will be done as soon as those posts come in. The flagpole, I know people have asked about the flagpole. The flagpole should be, the company has indicated they'll be back in about a week and a half to two weeks to reset the flagpole and get that back, back up and, and, and flying the Stars and Stripes. So, so we're anxious to get that done as well. But I do, I thought it would be a good idea to, to sort of share what, what our plan is on the World War One Memorial. I know that the council and councillor Gallagher in particular are very anxious to, to really do the right kind of job on, on the World War One monument. It's been cleaned and, and, but, but our plan, overall plan had been to turn it around and, and reset it because the, the setting and the monument piece is crumbling. So, and certainly would not withstand the, the turn. So, so I did want to let the council know that we'll be looking tomorrow night, actually, is, is the Broad Street development hearing. As part of that, we had negotiated some money mitigation funds to, to restore the World War One memorial. So we're going to obviously see if that's going to come to fruition tomorrow night. If that does not, we'll simply go and include that, the, the amount of money necessary to do that, complete that work as part of our next capital funding, phase two of twenty twenty one, essentially is what we're calling it. And that'll be in front of you next meeting. But in any case, that's, that project has been very slow, obviously. We froze all of our capital spending except for critically necessary things back when the pandemic hit. So we funded phase one, which was things we had to fund, you know, equipment payments and so forth. But now we're coming up to phase two and we're a little more comfortable making sure that we fund the things that, you know, such as, such as this one and a few other things that have been on the council radar for quite some time. So, so that is, that's where that stands. I'm happy to answer questions about that one.
Any questions for Mr. Dutton? Actually, I do have one, Mr. Dutton. So I did see the announcement that Wi-Fi has been expanded at the Academy Building. And it, it looks like it's going to have a broad-based, we'll say, coverage. Don't have to answer this now, but can we look into, I know with the common, the problem that we have, not only the damage, but a lot of times, we can't identify who caused the damage. So maybe looking at a long-term monitoring type of system so that if there is damage on the common and we don't have any reports of who caused the damage, that we might be able to identify the party or parties. Because I know this is just an on, ongoing issue with us. You know, unfortunately, every year, we've got something that goes on that needs to be fixed. So that would just be something for future consideration.
And, and I appreciate that. I think, I think you're absolutely correct. I will point out, just for those that don't know, when we can identify the, the person that's done the damage, we can make a claim against their insurance and we can have people out, there's a whole, it's a whole thing, have people out repairing the damage almost immediately, assuming that we have the materials for that. But that's, that's when we can identify the, the person that's hit it and, and they have insurance coverage, obviously, they should. But in, at times when we can't identify who's done the damage, in the case of, in the case of the south end of the common, clearly, I think, police department would agree that clearly the damage was done by a tractor trailer cutting that turn too close and, and taking out multiple granite posts and then fleeing. And it's honestly quite possible, they didn't even know they did the, the damage. But when we don't have a record of it and we can't identify who did it, then it falls on us. And so that, that is a concern, and I think that's councillor George's point about trying to do something there so that we can identify folks that hit that, whether they're insured or not. So, point very well taken.
Thank you. All right, moving on to High Street Truck Traffic Bridge.
Yes, I know, you know, I think all of the councillors get calls from folks in your districts about the use of, of the roads as, as, you know, otherwise residential roads as cut-throughs for heavy, heavy trucks. And this had come up, High Street has come up. I know Maples come up. There's any, any number of areas in town have come up and with, and folks rightly have complained about truck traffic. We are aware of the concerns about, specifically about High Street and the truck traffic on High Street. We did reach out to the DOT about the possibility of implementing a vehicle exclusion. I want to say about a year and a half ago, two years ago. But during our conversations with DOT, we realized that we'd never be able to meet the stipulations that, that are required under DOT's approval process. And DOT has to approve any restriction, truck restriction or limitation on a roadway. It's also a multi-year, really, it's a multi-year process to get that done. I know West Bridgewater has tried to do it on, or is trying to do it on one of their roads. And I know Easton is, is in the midst of trying to do something in one area of their town. So it is a, a lengthy process, but we did not, we did not embark on that because we knew that we couldn't meet the, the conditions that the DOC, DOT sets out for, for an exclusion. That said, we, we have had discussions with BRS and, and asked them, to the extent that they, they control, you know, it's their drivers. We've asked them to, to use the, the main roads, and they've been pretty good about that. But we can certainly reach out again and ask them to, you know, really emphasize the use of, of the main arteries for, for their contractors as well. So that's, that's kind of where that stands. I, you know, if the council has, any councillors have any ideas on what we can do? Sort of, of trying to get an exclusion through the DOT, which we know we, we can't. I'm happy, happy to pursue that. But, but that's kind of where we stand on that one.
So, Mr. Dutton, if my memory serves me correctly, there was at one time a sign at the bridge that had, I believe, weight restrictions because of the bridge. So is it that we would have to go to the Department of Transportation to put a weight restriction, which I believe was there already? Or is this, you're saying to exclude trucks altogether, we'd have to go to the DOT?
Actually, actually either. But I was, I was more specifically referencing the exclusion of trucks. So on the, on the High Street Bridge, it's interesting because, and, and we've had a lot of discussion about this due to the potential dam removal and then the requisite bridge replacement. due to the potential dam removal and then the, the requisite bridge replacement. The bridge currently is in okay condition. So I'm not sure, I don't, I don't know about the sign, you know, the weight limit signs that were on the bridge. And, and we certainly would not have removed them. So it is possible that as part of DOT's bridge inspection process, they, they came and identified signs that, you know, shouldn't have been there and took them away. That's possible, but, but I, again, not likely. So I'm not quite sure where those signs went, but, but the signs, you know, weight limitations are based upon the condition of the bridge. The condition of the bridge is assessed every couple of years by Department of, of Transportation Bridge Inspection Unit, who does a very thorough, I can tell you that they do a very thorough job assessing the condition of the bridge. So the, the High Street Bridge right now is not in great condition, but it's, it's certainly not in, in poor condition. And, and, you know, given the fact that it's been there for multiple hundreds of years, sort of a testament to the, the, the weight that it can, that it can take. But, but I can, I can certainly track down, you know, keep asking if, if, you know, there's a possibility of a weight restriction on that bridge that we can re-implement. But, but I guess I, I'm in the unfortunate position of just, just not knowing what was there.
Yeah, because, I mean, I, you know, speaking for the residents that have reached out to me, I think everyone would love to be able to restrict trucks from going in that route altogether. But that's one thing, but that being said, I, I would at least expect that if we can explore that that bridge is in okay shape, the trucks that are using that bridge are not only very large trucks, but they move at a very high rate. It does cause potential problems down there. So I, I would like for us to explore, you know, to that point, if there's a weight restriction in the interim to looking at it for a full restriction, I, I'd like to see that looked at as well. But I was just down there the other day and with some of the, some of the trucks, and I, I won't put it strictly on sand and gravel. There are trucks that are using that for other projects that are down in, in my neck of the woods that are using that as a cut-through. But, you know, I, I would, I would rather look at something doing it that way to avoid an issue versus waiting for an issue to happen and then us trying to figure out how to fix it.
I can, I'll look into weight restrictions, see what we can do there.
I'm gonna add something, Mr. President, if I can.
Go ahead, Mr. Wood.
So I, I live literally right around the corner from that bridge and, and the Hayward Street Bridge. One, one of the issues, and I understand the concerns, but one of the issues is that the Hayward Street Bridge is, is does have weight restrictions on it and, and for good reason, the, the DOT, when they were replacing Hayward Street, what, a couple of years ago, said there's only a few years left in that bridge at all. But the, the bigger problem is the fact that we don't have any way for trucks to traverse easily through the High Street area because of the Styles and Hart, which is, I always joke that I live on the largest block at Bridgewater and it's literally four miles around where there's no cut-throughs. So, so restricting both, both ways doesn't allow any, any of that type of traffic to move from east to west. And that's probably the larger problem that we need to discuss as part of this overall solution. Thanks.
All right, any other questions? All right, any other things to add for our next week's agenda? Please reach out to, or next meeting's agenda, please reach out to Mr. Dutton and myself and we'll get them on the agenda. Alrighty, moving on to discussions, we have none, committee reports, are there any, any committees that'd like to give us a report? Seeing none. Legislation for Action Petition P 2021-009, rescind and revoke annual town election warrant 2021. Mr. Dutton, would you like to expand on that or should it be to Attorney Rollins?
I can, I can expand on that. It's very simple, there was an, an omission on the prior vote. I believe that Rainham or, or somehow through the process, Rainham's seat on the, on the school committee had gotten left off of the town election warrant. And, and so the, your council clerk saw that and, and brought that to the attention of Attorney Rollins and, and myself. And, and it was a very simple, since the time, there was plenty of time, it was very simple, very simple to get this back on the agenda and revoked properly, and that was his recommendation.
So I'll make that motion, Mr. President.
Any questions?
I'll make that motion to, to rescind and revoke.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Fitzgibbons, any questions?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Souza?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Wood, you have a question?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, so this doesn't actually change the ballots at all, because my, my daughter voted absentee. So I think the ballots are fine, this is just the warrant itself, right?
Right, that is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? This requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton? Mr. Rushton? Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against?
We do not have any old business, new business ordinance D F Y 21-007, general ordinance amendment straight of code, part two, chapter 157. This is sponsored by councillor Chase. Mr. Chase, would you like to add anything to this?
Just if I may, Mr. President, thank you, very briefly. Just by reference to the explanatory note appended to the proposed ordinance, the town does receive requests periodically for various flags to be flown on town premises. And town administration has expressed, I think rightly so, recently that there's concern about that only to the extent that there is not a, there is not currently a policy that would provide for a consistent and fair practice in that regard. And so accordingly, I've brought forth this ordinance that I think covers a great many of the concerns and would provide a mechanism for citizens to request permission for, for a particular flag to fly from the town flagpole in front of the academy building for a period either of a day or, or perhaps as long as a week. Most notably, it would be a practice that would be coordinated with a proclamation. So in other words, a, a proclamation would need to exist for the town to consider under this policy I proposed, to fly a particular flag. And that proclamation could be coming from the federal government, from the state government. It could be a town council proclamation. So if a particular day, week or month is proclaimed to be worthy of public recognition, that would be the opportunity for which a citizen may come forward and under this policy, request that a flag be flown. So that is the very short introduction to this, it's fairly lengthy proposal because I've appended quite a number of specific rules to it. Thinking that we're, we're likely going to be taking an opportunity to consider this very carefully. And there, there are likely to be many amendments proposed to this, if indeed it is to go forward. So that's really all I have to say to introduce the matter. I thank you for that opportunity.
I'd make a motion to.
Chase?
Well, first I'd make a motion to send to the Rules and Procedures Committee, just as a formality.
Okay, I've got a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that, Mr. President.
And I, I just.
Second, Mr. Fitzgibbons?
I'd just say thank you, Mr. Chase, for, for thinking about this and putting it together, right? I think it's, it's very appropriate for us to think about it in this way. And having read through it, it seems like there's a lot of good thought behind it and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Gallagher, any question, any comments or questions?
Yeah, the same, I think it should be referred, referred to committee. And if the committee has concerns or wants to amend things, comes back to the council for further discussion. So I think it's, I think it's certainly worthy of going to committee.
Thank you.
Any other councillors? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Wood? Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against?
Okay, order O F Y 21-003, acceptance of a gift, Howard Foundation or council on aging. Mr. Dutton, anything to add on this?
No, only to say this is a, a gift from, from the Howard Foundation that we've received last few years. And it's, it is certainly appreciated and, and we use it to develop additional programming, which is particularly needed this year. So thanks to the Howard Foundation.
Motion to refer to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Fitzgibbons, any questions?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Souza?
No, sir.
Any other councillors? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against?
Okay, moving on to order O F Y 21-034, acceptance of a grant, M A P C transportation partnership grant. Mr. Dutton, anything to add?
I will only add the source of this funding is, is the Uber fees that are, that are collected by the state, Uber and Lyft, ride share fees that are collected by the state. The state has developed a, quite a pot of money and came out during this year of COVID and looking for proposals to fund, and this came out of our grant proposal. And, and I think it'll certainly benefit seniors in the community, it'll benefit everybody in the community, not just seniors, but certainly seniors need the ability to get a ride, you know, certainly to doctors, to vaccination sites and so forth. So this will, will come in very handy for that purpose.
Motion to refer to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees?
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Fitzgibbons, any questions?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Souza?
Nothing, thank you.
Any other councillors? Seeing none, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against?
Moving on to order O F Y 21-0035, acceptance of gift, Claremont Lakeside gift for tree planting. Mr. Dutton, anything to add on this?
Not too much to add, this is a, this is, comes as an offer to the planning board for an approval on the, one of the structures going up out at Lakeshore. And it will be set aside in the gift account to be expended at a later time, just so the council knows. The planning board did suggest, and I have certainly, certainly will act on it, but they suggested the creation of an ad hoc tree committee made up of folks with expertise in, in trees so that we can have a board that can select appropriate trees and appropriate areas to plant them. So this, this will help fund their efforts to some extent. I encourage you to refer it and I encourage passage.
Motion to refer to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Fitzgibbons, any questions?
I, I just urge the town manager to make sure that the tree wardener is amongst those on the committee because we don't want these trees escaping town.
Will do.
Mr. Wood, any questions?
Yeah, yeah, your description, Mr. Dutton, made it sound a little bit like, like a bribe, I'm sure it's not. It was, you made it sound like it was a gift for approval, I know it's not. But I, I think it's properly, more properly described as there were some, there was some tree work in the property and that could not be done. And so this mitigates the fact that normally the, the company doing the work would have put trees there and instead they're offering this value to the town so that the town can place it elsewhere. Is that a better way to describe this?
That is a much better way, I've been talking all day and I knew as soon as I said it that that's what it sounded like. But, but your, your way is a much better way, much more accurate way to describe it.
Okay, I'm good, thank you.
Any other questions? This requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against?
Okay, moving on, order O F Y 21-037, transfer order CPC Parks Recreation Pickleball Court Project. Mr. Dutton, anything to add on this?
No, I'm sorry, I was on the last one. No, nothing to add to this, it's a recommendation from the CPC, which I fully support and should go through the process as quickly as possible.
Motion to refer to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees?
Second.
Second.
Okay, got that. Mr. Fitzgibbons, any questions?
I, I just can, want to continue to make sure that these pickleball courts are going down at the senior center and the ongoing construction of the elementary school is going to have no impact on these, correct, Mr. Dutton?
That is correct, we've been very careful to make sure of that, too.
Thank you.
Mr. Wood?
Thank you, I, I've heard about these for a while, I, I think it's going to greatly benefit the senior center and, and other people that play pickleball. And as Mr. Fitzgibbons said, a lot of effort's been made to make sure that the, the two projects don't intersect wrongly. Thank you.
Any other councillors? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
I'm sorry, can I, before I call the roll, can I just confirm, did you vote on the Elm Street Capital Fund replenishment, oh three six?
No.
You skipped that.
I, no, I skipped that, my apologies. I'll go back.
We can go back to it.
Well, we, we can go back to it, right? So we're voting on oh three seven.
Okay.
My apologies for skipping that. Getting ahead of myself.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against?
All right, moving up to, back to order O F Y 21-036, transfer order Elm Street Capital Fund replenishment. Mr. Dutton, anything to add?
Only that this, the original genesis of the Elm Street reconstruction started with a transfer out of Only that the original genesis of the Elm Street reconstruction started with a transfer out of capital, our capital stabilization account. We want to make sure that this amount gets wrapped into the total project and the bond for the total project and is paid back by the new growth on Elm Street and not by taxpayers otherwise. So we want to give this money back to the taxpayers in order to spend on other capital needs.
Motion to refer to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees?
Second.
Mr. Fitzgibbons, any questions?
No, thank you.
Mr. Souza?
No, sir.
Any other counselors? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against.
Moving on to OFY 21-038, transfer order, completed CPC Legion Field fencing project. Mr. Dutton, anything to add to this?
Nope, this just transfers money back to the CPC that was not used or the CPA funds that was not used on a particular project.
Motion to refer to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees?
Second.
All right, Mr. Fitzgibbons, any questions?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Chase?
No, no questions, thank you.
Any other counselors? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood? Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against.
Okay, moving on to order OFY 21-039, acceptance of one-time revenue Claremont Lakeside Viva for Public Safety. Mr. Dutton, would you like to add anything to this?
Only that this is pursuant to mitigation as negotiated under the CBA's authority and as part of the 40B permit process for the Viva apartments.
Motion to refer to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees?
Second.
A motion, a second. Okay, Mr. Fitzgibbons, any questions?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Gallagher?
Nothing.
Any other counselors? Seeing none, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood? Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against.
All right, moving on to the FY 2022 budget orders. What I'd like to do is ask our town council clerk to schedule a hearing for these orders for May 11th, 2021.
Thank you.
And now let's go through the orders.
Mr. President, would it be appropriate would it be appropriate to just refer all of them to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees omnibusally?
I second that.
Take that as a motion.
Yes.
We have a second. Any discussion, Mr. Fitzgibbons?
It all relates to the same issue, the FY 2022 budget. So I think it just speeds the process up.
Okay, Mr. Gallagher?
Right, same, I agree.
Okay, any other counselors? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against.
Okay. Moving on to citizens' comments. If there are any citizens who would like to comment, I ask that you please state your name and your street, and please keep your comments to three minutes or less. And my screen's kind of fuzzy. Can you help me out with this?
Yes, Mr. Domingo would like to speak.
Mr. Domingo?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm Vernon Domingo, 36 Saddle Drive, longtime resident of Bridgewater. And I'm speaking here in support of the project by Town Council to codify and organize a system for having flags flown, various flags flown on state and town property of charity. I think this is an important step, formalizing, making it clear. I'm a member of BCCR, Bridgewater Communities for Civil Rights. And we are determined, and as you know, working many years now, to help create, to do our part to help create, making our town an inclusive town for all different communities. And so this is a very important step forward. As this moves forward, I am a member of BCCR, but also a parent of a transgender son. And so those civil rights issues for all people are important. And I think this is one way of organizing it so that we can publicly express our incorporation of different communities and different issues in our town. So I thank the town for proceeding in this direction in an organized, systematic way. Thank you very much for raising this.
Thank you. Ms. Sheridan, did you- Man, my screen's all messed up.
I had Ms. Cordero as well.
Okay, and if you could help me, go right ahead.
Okay, I had Ms. Cordero first, and I think that Ms. Sheridan also wants to speak. So I have her as well on my list.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Cordero, if you could just state your street, that would be great.
Thank you, 135 Deerfield Drive in Bridgewater. I also, I think the Town Council and Town Manager know that I'm in favor of this ordinance because I've written to everyone. I am really appreciative of Counselor Chase coming up with a policy. Completely understand, I'm also a member of BCCR. Completely understand that there needs to be a policy in place in order to ensure that this happens in the right way. I want to add on, I guess, to what Mr. Domingo said, that I know the ordinance needs to happen first. Of course, the next thing that we're going to be asking for is that a pride flag be able to be flown in front of the administration building. And I think it is a nice sign that our community is supportive of all people, no matter race, gender, sexual orientation, religion, origin, all of that sort of thing. So I think it would be a really nice gesture. So starting with the ordinance, I know you don't usually respond to citizens' comments, and I respect and appreciate that. I am curious when we'll find out about when the Rules and Procedures Committee will be meeting. And again, thank you to Counselor Chase for writing the policy and the ordinance, and hoping that everyone will support it. And thank you for giving me time to speak. And I'm sorry, Jill, I didn't see that you had had your hands up first. So I apologize for stepping on your toes.
Thank you. Sheridan, you're next.
Yeah, well, I do appreciate that BCCR is talking about, you know, inclusion flags and pride flags. But I think the more immediate need is that we actually had a white nationalist rally in town that was, as far as I know, town-funded and police-supported, not intentionally, but by manipulation of the rally organizers. And I'd like the Town Council, under, I think it's Section 14, I looked it up, during the past two hours after I listened to the meeting. I believe Section 14 of the Town Council Rules and Procedures state that you should have a response to my inquiry about, you know, how the rally was funded. And I brought this up last week, last Tuesday night at the Town Council meeting. And I just want to, I can't stress enough that I just want to help you hold people accountable for the gross manipulation of our town resources, our town officers, our government and our citizens. And I mean, aside from the fact that my family has had to flee our home, and then, you know, the response to that was that I just listened to two hours of like budgets and no response to that from police or town officials, that like sort of laissez-faire response is, you know, it's deafening. And I'm hoping Bridgewater will do better. I do want to help you. I feel like we're all on the same team with this. And I feel like we need answers to why this rally was and I really don't think anybody understood the magnitude of what was coming to town. But I do want to stress that I did tell people that this was happening. I told you there were white nationalists coming to town with affiliations to Proud Boys, Oath Keepers, alt-right, you know, media personalities. And now I'm targeted as a public school teacher for that and literally don't feel safe in my own home, and nobody has addressed that. I've emailed Town Council, I've emailed Town Managers, I mean, the world. I've emailed the world, and nobody wants to address that. And I feel like because it was brought up last week, this needs to be addressed here tonight. And I really am asking for that. You know, this isn't an effort to like call people out or get anyone in trouble. I just want accountability. And more than that, I want safety for myself so I can go to sleep tonight and not feel like I have to sleep in my living room. You know, I don't feel safe. I don't feel protected here. And that's very disheartening to me. I know I have four kids, public school teacher, just a mom, and I just want answers. And so BCCR can talk about like this flag and that flag flying, but you know what? We just funded a white nationalist rally. And so maybe that's the more immediate concern at this point. And please, I am just asking for answers. That's it. Am I at three minutes yet? Because I could go on. I mean, I just want somebody to be responsible so that this doesn't happen again, so that we don't make Bridgewater a, you know, these people that organized this rally weren't from Bridgewater, none of them. They were Western Mass in Rhode Island, and they were here and trying to make it sound like the counter protesters were like these violent Antifa fascists, leftists, like whatever, you name it, I've been called it. And it's disgusting, and it's not true. And it's a gross manipulation of our town, our town. You, me, our officers, our government, our citizens. I'm a public servant. I'm a school teacher. It's what I do, you know? So please, I'm asking for a response to that. I'm asking for support for that. And I want to work together with this, honestly, to make sure this is, you know, accounted for and answered. So I'm asking, my Town Councilor, Mr. Souza, you did call me back Friday, and we've been playing phone tag and trying to get in touch. Michael Dutton-
Ms. Sheridan, you're up against the three minutes. I apologize, but-
So is there an answer?
Thank you.
Chapter 14 or Section 14, Town Council should answer to that tonight?
Mr. Rollins? So Ms. Sheridan, this isn't normally the way we go about it, and I understand that. We do have to follow open meeting law to a very stringent control. I'll just say that no one is ignoring what you're saying. But we have to have the right time and the right process to go forward. Mr. Rollins, am I accurate on that?
That is correct. So that discussion will be occurring in executive session. It will not be part of the open meeting.
That's not acceptable to me, and it shouldn't be acceptable to anybody. My safety's at risk. I'm being threatened on a daily basis. And you're talking about executive session and processes. That's not okay.
Is there anyone else that'd like to speak? Citizens' comments? Mr. Beal?
Hey, Keith Beal, 10 Fieldcrest Drive. The only thing I would say is that this conversation happened two weeks ago at the last meeting. And why didn't you call executive session at that point and discuss it? I don't have a feeling about, I wasn't at the event. I don't know what happened. I'm not speaking to that. What I am speaking to is that in our nation, we're divided more than we've ever been. And the longer you allow situations like this to go without answers for either side, I've heard questions from both sides. But the longer you let this go without giving answers, the fire just gets bigger and bigger and bigger. I've been watching the comments as the meeting's going on tonight. And, you know, people were, it's just something, I don't understand why, if this was brought out as passionately from both sides two weeks ago at your meeting, that now we're here again and we hear the same comments, only now they're twice as fueled with anger and frustration as why there's not going to be a response from this council tonight and why now you're going to go into executive committee. You know, this is the kind of thing that you got, you got a nip in the bud, that you got to call an executive committee right after last meeting. Or, you know, maybe that doesn't follow Robert's rules. But you got to do something more than now push this off for another two weeks to allow this to simmer and allow this to build even more. Because now you're going to get to your next meeting. And what I do recommend, if it can be done, is that the only thing that has to happen is you have to have executive committee tonight to discuss this, that you put this topic first at your next meeting. Do not allow it to happen after the two speakers because you're going to have the same thing. You're going to have the same people who are frustrated from both sides of this saying the exact same thing for the third meeting in a row. So I just, again, I wasn't at the event. I understand how divided we are, and that's what worries me, is that we've now, and you as leaders have now let this thing build and build and build. And it could be up to a month that this is building. This event, we should have just addressed this and moved on as a town. And I just don't understand why we're going back into executive session now. Thank you for your time and your service.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens that'd like to speak?
Mr. President, I had a chat from Cleone, Mainville, then Sam Baumgarten, and I also see Susie Robinson has her hand raised.
Here's Mainville, you're on.
Hello, everyone. Cleone, Mainville, 25 Curve Street. I joined this call in support of two things. One, the flag, as BCCR has already articulated. And again, based on what Jill has shared, I'm going to share some vulnerability tonight. What has happened to Jill can happen to any one of us. And there is this group that's called Turtle Boy. And that is a huge fear of mine in my advocacy to promote diversity, inclusion and equity. And to feel that I cannot speak out against injustices or work in a certain way to elevate the voices of those that are marginalized is a true concern. It's a true fear. And she's been being targeted by this group. And to not have those questions addressed sends a clear message to any of us in the social justice realm that we cannot find comfort or protection from our town. This group has targeted other social justice organizations that I work with. It has happened in Totten, it has happened in Easton, and here we're having it again. And so just like Mr. Keith, I don't know your last name, has articulated here, this cannot be delayed. It is not something out of convenience. It is a real and true fear. If you type in Jill's name, it is blasted everywhere, her address, her pictures, her family, and it could be any one of us. And for those who know me, we've been very cautious about our advocacy. We come with compassion, and I'm asking that that be done here. This is a level of concern. It is not just something to kind of incite or agitate. This is a matter of safety. It's a matter of time before it's any one of us, and she does not deserve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Robinson, I believe you're next, and then Mr. Baumgarten, you'll be after Ms. Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would 100% echo the sentiment, and sorry, I already gave my address before, but 20 Haldy Lane. And actually, let's talk about that. And actually, let's talk about that. I share the same sentiment that Mrs. Mainville shared about we put ourselves out there as advocates in the community, as volunteers, as parents, as individuals. You know, many of you know me, I have volunteered, I have gotten active in this town, not just in, in advocacy, but also on our financial committee. I participated in our master plan committee. This town repeatedly says that they want more people to step up, volunteer, be involved. And again, as I look at these faces of our leadership, which are predominantly white and male, we need you to not only be vocal, we need you to act. Because of the fact that, you know, we have a white woman who is being targeted. If she is not safe, others are not safe. So we need you, because you're in these positions of authority, because you're in these positions of the ability to act. We need you to be there for the whole community, which includes people like Ms. Sheridan, like Mrs. Mainville, like myself and my family. Another thing I would like to propose, I absolutely also agree with Mr. Beal. I would like to see a response on the agenda for the next town council meeting. You can have your executive session, but please come back with a very, very specific statement and response. Because this has been going on for several weeks. And I think that that's a fair request. And then the third thing is I actually, you know, I, I do want to support, I appreciate this, this motion and this effort around the flag policy and the process. I wholly encourage that. I entirely back that. But I also want you to please keep in mind, raising a flag, putting that out there, it also means it needs action behind that. If we want to see that we're truly a welcoming community, it means you also have to listen and respond to people. Not only when they're in peril or in crisis or distress, but welcoming means a lot more about being able to have tough conversations, about being uncomfortable, about being responsive in these kinds of situations. I'm really sad that this is what it's taken, is that we have somebody in our community who is being threatened. You know, for months last year, we were calling teachers heroes. And now she's being blasted in the media and vilified. And she's being met with what I'm understanding to be. And, you know, again, I can't, obviously I don't know everything behind the scenes right now about who's individually responded or not, but the way she is pleading and, and the fact that we're responding in this way is clearly showing that people aren't responding to her. So please respond. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgarten?
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, Sam Baumgarten, sixty Short Street. Basically, I could just say ditto to everything that's been said. I don't want to repeat all of the comments and arguments, but I've been following the situation with Jill and lending some support in the background with some emails. I certainly think that she deserves answers. We all do. And ditto to councillor Chase for bringing the proposal forward, the ordinance, so that we can then have a proper way to introduce a suggestion for flying the flag. But I also want to just expand a little bit about what Susie said about really taking action because we now have a committee in town, a diversity, equity and inclusion committee. We can fly a flag, all of those things as we are sometimes say are checking off boxes. We've done this, we've done that, we've done this. And now we have a real life, difficult situation to deal with. And you really need to take some action and answer the questions that have been asked tonight. So I hope that this will appear on your agenda next month. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like, any other citizens that'd like to speak?
Mrs. Hanson would like to speak.
Hi, Janet Hanson. Hi, Pleasant Street, Bridgewater. I just wanted to add to, it's kind of like the comment I had last week about the response during meetings. I do know that we can't have a dialogue back and forth because you'd be here till three o'clock in the morning on, on that, but there is, as Jill had mentioned, on section fourteen of the town code, citizen comments. It reads, "A citizen open forum will be placed on each council agenda and a citizen comment period will be included at the end of each agenda, just like we've been doing." Anyone may comment. We know that's up to three minutes. Comments or inquiries should be made in a respectful manner and not cast a person, a person, then on individuals, which I think most people are respectful. But this statement, "All inquiries should be responded to if the information is available at the time or a public response should be forthcoming at a future meeting at the town council." That's right in our town code. I personally don't see that happening that often, if any time with the council. I know we can't, you can't speak to us as we're speaking and answer questions unless it's for clarification on something. But you do have the capability of responding during the meeting at some point or at the next meeting, including it in your gender. And that's what I'm asking is that if there are concerns or whatever, if you can't talk about it then because you don't have enough information, make sure that you include it. There should be a spot in your meetings to have that in the automatically, just like you do have citizen comments, then you have a, a portion, an agenda in your, or spot in your meetings to address the previous citizen comments. And it is in the town code, you are allowed to do that. So that's what I'm asking is that we would feel like we're being listened to and heard. Both of those, you can listen to somebody, but are you hearing us? So if we can feel like there's going to be a response, it may not be that night, but if it could be put into the agenda on your next meetings, have a spot that's designated for response by town council. And I appreciate everything and thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens that'd like to comment? And I do not see anyone, do you?
I'd also like to, Verda Domingo again, yeah, just to give my support to Ms. Sheridan there. And we're sure that other groups like BCCR support her fully and want this issue to be resolved. And town council can do that. We hope they do soon.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to council comments, I will start with Mr. Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief tonight and I, I for one, as one councillor, you know, there isn't, and I don't think, I can't speak for all my colleagues, but I will say, I think that we do want to comment on the issue that was at hand during citizens' comments tonight. But we as a, as a board have not been, you know, briefed or given all the information regarding the events that led. We've only read what we've read in the newspapers, we've heard the comments here tonight, we're seeing things on social media. So we want to hear at an appropriate time from our, our management in the town relative to what information they have gathered. And we should get some information later this evening or whatever we're able to share. I'm sure that, I certainly would like to be able to give my thoughts on that as we move forward. So and I think I share those sentiments with my colleagues that we're not trying to hide back information, but we just want to get appropriate information from the people in the positions of management in the town as to what they've gathered and are able to share with us. So, I mean, we do not meet for three more weeks, so April twenty-seventh, so unless we meet beforehand, it may be hard to put something like that on the agenda for the next three weeks. Having said that, we will have a town election before our next meeting unless we meet before then. And I want to wish all the candidates that are running good luck and I, I hope that I'm back on April twenty-seventh. And I'm sure we'll be joined by a couple new councillors and and we'll go on from there. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mrs. Lo.
Nothing tonight.
Okay, Mr. Chase.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I certainly appreciate all the comments this evening. It's, it's been a very sobering discussion to hear the public comment relative to the event of a few weeks ago. I feel very confident that we're going to receive the kinds of answers that people are looking for beginning this evening. And I think that we, as a council, I think that we are committed to providing responses to the community. You know, we, we are bound by a number of laws that relate to our agenda and public notice and two weeks ago, we could not have just decided that evening to go into executive session that evening. That's why it has to be taking place tonight. So that certainly accounts unfortunately for some of the lag time and, and it, I know it certainly exacerbates the concerns of people who are looking for answers. We too are looking for answers and we'll be happy to share those with the public, I think, at our next meeting. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. White.
Thank you. Excellent comments from the prior, prior councillors. And in Mr. Chase's policy statement on, on the flag uses is where the council generally heads with policy direction. So I would expect that as we learn more about the events and as we can define policy, that we'll have policy in place. That's fairly, that's fair to many. But tonight I want to speak about, I want to say the ban on retail marijuana stores has failed. How do I know? Well, first I asked BSU. BSU's drug policy follows the federal guidelines and during the academic year of two thousand eighteen and nineteen, it had two hundred and sixty-three drug policy violations. I'm quoting from the email from BSU. Most of these cases involve small amounts of marijuana and not other drugs like heroin, cocaine or LSD. Then I go Googled Bridgewater drug bust and I found many items in the news since the ban has started. As an example, one from the Bridgewater Police Department webpage from March thirteenth of last year. The accused was charged with possession, distribute class C and class D drugs during the on-scene investigation officers located and seized a weighted scale with multiple bags totaling nine pounds of marijuana along with a half pound of magic mushrooms, HTC con extract, ninety-six bundles of edibles packaged as Nerds THC candy. You know, when we talk about underage consumption, I have no tolerance for underage consumption. And it's this type of activity, the, the drug bust that you hear about, that causes underage, underage consumption. And it's not transferable to stores to sell to twenty-one-year-olds. His facts clearly show that the ban, which was intended to keep marijuana out of Bridgewater, has failed to do so at many levels. Since the ban started, three retail stores have been built within eight miles of Roche Brothers. Google the stores, Google the directions, you can see how close these stores are to Bridgewater now. It's easy for anyone to go and purchase at a retail store. These stores are taking tax dollars away from our schools and town budgets. During the ban, we have literally lost hundreds of thousands of dollars in revenue that would have been evenly split between school and town. I hope that the, the question on the ballot allows voters a safe and non-hostile environment to express their true opinion about the ban. I hope that people will come out and vote yes, so can get back to common sense discussion and move forward. Thank you.
Mr. Rush.
Thank you, President George. Was that me?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize having some wifi issues at the home tonight. Just real briefly, I would support the comments of councillor Chase and don't want to repeat those in terms of the legalities and the positions that we're in as policy developers. After listening to the comments tonight from some of, some of the citizens, I can't personally help but feel that I've, I've failed to do my job in representing them. And failed to take, really to light the impact, the event that took place in town two weeks ago. Now, when I chaired the town council meeting two weeks ago, again, I was following policy procedure, doing the right thing. I pressed for executive session based on public safety factors. Wanted to tell details. Don't know if there's litigation involved. But with all that being said, I can't help but tonight to feel like I have let citizens down in taking this long to get back. I can only hope as a town council that after we find out details tonight, that we don't wait three weeks, that we resolve this issue, whether it's, whether it's personally or with a public statement or reaching out. I think that's what has to happen in order to heal from the events two weeks ago. We can't be five weeks out and then respond as a council to some of the comments that have happened tonight. So I can only hope that's where we're headed tonight. I know every one of us on the council have good intentions, but we might have failed at really being able to see the fact that this has had on members in the, in the community. So with that, I, I thank you.
Mr. Souza.
Thank you. As the young lady said, she and I did have a conversation. And I was hoping tonight at the session, I could get some answers to a number of questions that I have put together, which would help her, I hope, and get some information back to her. But I couldn't get back to her and really give her any information because how many of us on the council had all the information or any of it? We just, what we've read, as you said earlier. So I'm just hoping that we come to some information this evening that could help. Thank you.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes, thank you, Mr. George. And as always, thank you for running a, a very good virtual meeting again. I, I know it can't be easy and I appreciate you keeping everything moving and all the balls in the air, juggling them. So, thank you. The discussion tonight is just clearly cleared up for me again, and I've brought it forward to this council before and actually been rebuffed on it. The idea that we take every citizen's comment at the beginning or at the end and, and we make a commitment to either reply to them, if it's a very specific individual comment that doesn't need to be aired again at a, at a town council meeting, or that it becomes part of the town manager report in the next meeting. And maybe that town manager's report item is just, we're continuing to look into it, but it's there. It's, it's on the agenda. It can be discussed. That way, there's no open meeting law issues. And I, I'm, you know, my time is short here because of term limits, et cetera. And I, I, I'm going to urge the council to continue to, to really look at that and say, let's put it, every town, every citizen's comment goes in as part of the town, next town manager's report. So that's my comment and I'm sorry I get a little bit frustrated with it, but it's just the way I feel. And, you know, thank you again for, for a very good meeting.
Thank you. Okay, I will entertain a motion to move into executive session under MGL, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one A, section three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair so declares, and to adjourn from executive session.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Second. This requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mrs. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Aiden, favor and against?
Everyone, have a good evening.
Sean, can we have three minutes break?
Yeah, yes.